I'm going to bring my device scripts next time, so I can hold that down. Anyway, but welcome to, this is the June 16th voting, voting session of Borough Council. Everyone is in attendance. Mike Gailey is attending virtually. He's not on yet.
Okay.
And I believe Eric Lorgas is either on or will be joining us. Anyway, so the first thing we're going to do is item two, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Allen. Thank you. Item number three, comment suggestions, petitions by residents in attendance regarding items that are not on the agenda. Have anything? Okay. Next, we're going to go to comments by Borough Council and the mayor and start. Lisa, do you want to start?
Oh, there, there we go. Thanks, Mr. Metrick. Okay, now, now I'm screaming. I want to thank, welcome everyone to Borough Hall for the first time in, what, 15 months? This is my first official meeting here in person, so it's lovely to see all council members and residents here of the borough. So, thank you, and for those who have been vaccinated, thank you for that as well. I want to celebrate Pride Month this month for folks in our community that are celebrating LGBTQ. And I also want to celebrate Juneteenth on Saturday. There are events throughout the county as well as throughout Westchester, one being at Melton Center, celebrating the emancipation of slaves. So I encourage everyone to participate in an event this weekend. Thank you.
I don't have a lot today, I just wanted to say happy summer from a teacher to everybody else. It was a crazy year, obviously. So to any students that, I don't know, are listening at home, I guess, happy summer, and to all the teachers, including Mr. Stefano right here, happy summer and happy pride and happy Juneteenth. Thanks, guys. Is it working? Okay, there we go, sorry. Good evening, everyone. Yes, happy summer. Today was my last day for the year, so I'm very, very excited for that. I wanted to just remind everybody that Gay Street is now officially closed as an open air marketplace, so get up in town and support your, our local restaurants and businesses. I know there's a little bit of a hiccup with the PLCB. Hopefully that can be resolved soon, so that, I'm excited to sit in the street and have a beverage or two myself, so get up there and support your businesses. Yes, happy Pride Month, and I know last night we talked about getting a flag. I reached out to my brother-in-law to get, who works for the HRC, and then we will have a flag by the end of the week, by Friday, so I'll bring it to the Borough Hall. So hopefully that'll be up by Friday or Saturday this, or next week, early next week. So happy Pride Month, and I think that's it. Yep.
That's, that sounds great.
See, oh, see if I can do it. Hello? There you go. Thanks, Mr. Man. Greetings from the Swedish ward in the borough, the sixth ward. I spent most of the day today with Mr. Perone and Mr. O'Brien shutting down Gay Street. It was pretty uneventful, the fire department took place filling the barriers, and the public works team did a great job putting up the concrete barriers. And before we actually walked off Gay Street, by about 11 o'clock, all the restaurants had already moved their tables and chairs out to the middle of the, of the, the street and started setting up for lunch. And it was a happy sight this year, instead of seeing all those construction signs at every intersection, I'm sure they'll probably be coming, but it looked like a really nice open-air market that you would see. So it was, it was very, very nice. Tomorrow night, if you're around town, at the Chester County Historical Society, they're going to have a tour of the town. There're going to be three or four different guides taking you around town and showing the different highlights of the historic buildings and what took place back in the 17 and 1800s around the borough, and that's being run by Mr. Tom Walsh, one of our neighbors. So with that, enjoy the summer and support the, the open-air market, and, and hopefully we have a successful season, and stay sunny. Thank you.
Good evening. On Monday, on the first page of the Daily Local, here's Tony Polito and our good chief of police. At a celebration of Tony's 80th birthday, he lives over in the first ward, the lesser suite ward, and he's 80. Tony has a strong, has been a strong supporter of the borough, says Westchester Police Chief James Moorhead. He has done so much that goes into hiring of good officers, and that's where it starts, good people coming through the door makes the job easy. Tony's been volunteering for 50 years. He was on this council, served on this council, and he, I'm not sure if he was an officer of the council, but he certainly was a very active member of the council, and he was active in the Westchester Fire Department, was a state constable for 28 years, and was one of the founding members of Good Fellow. I'm sorry, chief was master of ceremonies, and they had a lot of first responder type vehicles go by Tony's house. So that was nice, and thank you for doing that, Chief Moorhead. When he's 90, let me know, I'll be there, because I like cake and, and eating it, too. Now, also, the veterans, the council had their Memorial Day ceremony in Marshall Square Park, and they shoot off cannons, but that's a good thing. So that was very nice, and it turns out that this is the red, white, and blue time of year. Coming up on Saturday, we have the Juneteenth celebration. I believe that's the first one in the borough that is open-air celebration, and there is, I believe, a parade or a, at least a rally sort of thing, which I think starts at noon. I'm not sure, but Juneteenth this Saturday, celebrate that. July 1st is Canada Day. July 4th is Independence Day, all of which will be celebrated in the borough with great happiness. And Bastille Day is on the 14th. So those are all the fun things you can do. I want to say that after last week's committee meetings, I took a walk, and I did not know, but we have a genuine bona fide bodega here in Westchester. Yeah, we do. It's only a block away. And to support that, I went in and bought a nice votive candle. It's a tribute candle to Santissima Muerte. She's the patron saint of death. I think that's unofficial, but there she is, all in black, with a skull head, and, you know, I kind of like that, and get into that sort of ceremony, but we do have a bodega. You know where the Mexican restaurant is, in the Chestnut Shopping Center, and the bodega is attached to that. So happy upcoming month. Thank you.
Patron saint of death?
What?
A patron saint of death? I didn't know they had one of them. Okay. Keep her away from me. Monday, two weeks ago, at a special council meeting that was quite well-attended, upper management from SEPTA joined us for the meeting to give us a report on the current state of plans for the railroad, and I'm not going to get into a lot of details, a lot of that's been online and in the Daily Local, but it, it doesn't look as though that's going to happen, and partly for funding reasons, partly because SEPTA's priorities are elsewhere, aligned to King of Prussia and Redding are on their radar before us, plus they have $4.6 billion of stuff they've got to do before they would even consider our fair town. We're going to be talking about that a little bit again next month at the Smart Growth Meeting, so feel free to join us. And happy summer. My peas, tomatoes, everything is just doing great. It's nice to be outside, and actually, with Gay Street closing, my wife, who has not set foot in a restaurant for 15 months, now she wants to go out to dinner. Let's do it. So we're going to try some of the restaurants that we haven't been to. But anyway, so have a good summer, everyone. Oh, I still get to talk. Okay. What's that? Oh, Mike, I'm sorry.
Can you guys hear me? Don?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Sorry I couldn't be there the past two nights. It's, I'm quite bummed, because I've been looking forward to being back in person for 15 months and, and working with you all again, so I very much apologize. Unfortunately, my wife and oldest daughter made some plans to be away this week, you know, a couple of months ago, and when we decided to go back in person, it didn't really jive in my brain that I was going to have to be here with an almost two-year-old who is not, not quite yet sleeping soundly. So I do apologize I couldn't be there this month. Following up on something that Nick said, I do want to say congratulations to all the teachers, and a sincere and heartfelt thank you to all the teachers, including the two that we have on council. I cannot even imagine how hard a year every teacher had this year, and how hard every teacher worked to make sure that our, our children could have as, as good an education as possible remotely, and then as safe and good an education as possible when they were in person. My parents were teachers, my in-laws were teachers, and, you know, my dad's not sad that he retired before this happened, because he can't imagine how, how hard this must have been. So from all the parents to all the teachers, we really appreciate all of your hard work this year. Happy pride, and thanks to Mr. Stefano for getting the flag that we can put up on Borough Hall. I think that's a great show of support. Happy Juneteenth, and thank you to Bernie, Mike, Sean, The Bid, Mr. O'Brien, and everyone else for all the hard work that's gone into closing Gay Street again. I know that everybody that I know is really excited to be back on Gay Street and able to dine outside. It's a beautiful night for it tonight, and hopefully we'll have some more of those this summer. And that's all I have to say. Thanks, Don.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go to item number five, which is the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Brace, I'm Bernie Flynn.
Mr. Flynn.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Consent Agenda.
Do you have a second? Motion by Mr. Flynn, second by Lisa Dorsey. Mr. Metrick, could you call the question?
Sure, thank you. Ms. Dorsey? Mr. Flynn? Mr. Stefano? Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Hi.
Mr. Bracelin?
Yes.
President Gailey?
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Going to go to other business.
Mr. Brace, thank you.
Yes.
Bernie Flynn, from the sixth ward. Under, under other business, I'm a member of the downtown and also The Bid, and at our last meeting, I told them that I would ask the administration to reestablish the Halloween Parade in the fall of 2021 because of the COVID situation has been lifted, and now we are safe to be outside without masks. The, the own, I don't think that the open-air market will extend all the way to Halloween. I think last year we shut it down in the beginning of October because of the weather, but my petition to administration is to reestablish and ask Parks and Recreation to bring back the Halloween Parade in 2021.
Thank you. Anyone else on council have anything?
I think the open air, Don, this is my call. I think the open-air market went until just before Thanksgiving last year, but that, that's not to say we can't, we can't try and reestablish the Halloween party, or the Halloween Parade, rather.
Mr. Gailey, I agree with you. If we don't go down Gay Street, if it's still shut, we could, you know, up, go up Market and come down Chestnut, or
Yeah, I mean, I
down.
I think in terms of the closure of Gay Street this year, it probably makes sense for it to be over by Halloween anyway. Last year, I think we extended it, you know, obviously, we were dealing with a whole other set of circumstances than we are this year. Hopefully, that will continue this fall, but yeah, I'm all for, I'm all for having a Halloween Parade.
Sorry, yeah, sorry, my mic wasn't working before. I was going to ask about, or mention that I think that the, the Gay Street closure did go farther past, but I, I think we should still try and do it, even if it is a different route. I think, I wish we could get all this, I want to get the Turks Head Festival back, I want to get it all back going on, so I'm a supporter of this.
Anyone else on council have any comment? Or other business, anyone in the audience? Okay, I have one issue. Last month, council approved $6,000 for a rail feasibility and economic impact study. Also, the borough had, prior to that, budgeted $9,000 to contribute to that, and the county, I believe it was a grant in the amount of $11,000 for $26,000. My concern is with the current state of the railroad, whether that study is necessary. I don't think that it is, and I'm having a little bit of difficulty justifying it with taxpayer money for something that most likely is not going to exist. I'm just curious to see what other members of council think about it.
Don, if I, if I could go? I think, I think there's an ongoing discussion between SEPTA and the committee, one that happened after the meeting a couple of weeks ago was ended before the Restoration Committee could present an alternate proposal, but the Restoration Committee has actually sought funding through Tom Casey, Senator Casey's office, Bob Casey, to get $7 million, six or seven million, I can't remember, in funding for actually an alternate proposal to reestablish rail service that would potentially be feasible in the short term, so I think that the, there's still an ongoing short-term discussion with SEPTA happening right now between the committee and the powers that be at SEPTA. So I think we should continue staying the course until SEPTA tells us, get lost.
Thank you. Lisa?
Is it on? Okay. Mix is on, okay. Thank you. One, I want to thank Mr. Bracelin for raising that, because I had some of the same questions. I was not able to attend the SEPTA special meeting, but I understand, I pretty understand the results, and I just wonder if that is money well-spent in a, in a budget crunch year, if we need or can even revisit that. I understand what Mr. Gailey is saying, I just, based on what I understand from SEPTA, is that really, is the timing really correct, and is it the right use of funds that were not in the budget?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I expand for a second?
Mr. Scott?
Oh, Mr. Scott. Sorry, I forgot this, but as is my wont, I want to invite everybody to Marshall Square Park for Music at Marshall. It's a very pleasant event, Thursday, July 1st, 6:30, they're going to have food trucks there, and the band is the Sin Brothers, which must be a fundamental religious group or something, to be called the Sin Brothers, but I'm, they played there before, and I'm sure it'll be great. Everybody likes it, and, you know, they have at least 300 people there, maybe more. It's a, it's a big, good event, so come on over and bring your chairs or blankets, see you at Marshall Square Park for the music on July 1st.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn?
Thank you, Mr. Brace. I had the pleasure this past weekend to actually ride on the historic Westchester train. We left Westchester, and we traveled to Glenn Mills, and we had a lovely picnic, and then we traveled back. And the, the trains themselves are extremely well-maintained, the roadbed and the tracks, not so much. I felt like I was on a trolley, the 11 trolley car going down Woodland Avenue in Philadelphia, rocking back and forth, but they checked the track regularly to make sure it's safe before they put any trains on it. If, I did hear the situation that we are now talking with Senator Casey's office, Bob Casey's office, but the, the economic impact study, the mayor and the train commission want to run, run real fast to get this thing started. The money, we still have not received the money yet from the county, we're waiting for $11,000 from the county. The borough has put in, into the line item, our money, or $9,000, and our $6,000. But my situation, you know, being chair of the Finance Committee is, I think we should, before we run off and do an economic impact study and spend $26,000, we should wait to hear from Senator Casey's office to see if he has the ability to help us or help the Train Committee out. Just recently, Congresswoman Holahan received funding from the federal government, and she gave half the money to Exton Train Station, and she gave the other half to Redding, Pennsylvania, because of the need. The people from SEPTA told us that our train line, as good as it is, and as good as, as much as we want it, is not on their 12-year plan, and it'll cost $500 million to go from Westchester to Philadelphia, which is $35 million a mile. My thought, again, is to hold on to the money until Senator Casey says, go, or, or fund something, or promises, promises us something, because we could use the, we can't use the county money. The county money has to be used for whatever it was intended for, but the $15,000 we could surely use, you know, somewhere else in the borough. I just think we should wait until we hear from Senator Casey, because nothing's going to change based on SEPTA's analysis of the 12-year plan. So waiting six months or eight months isn't going to make a difference.
Thank you. Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Perone?
Not here.
Oh, Sean's here. Sean, where, where are the contracts or the expenditures?
The contracts needed some revisions.
Yeah, there's two contracts. One is for the study, and the other's for a, a kind of piggyback on for a, what they call an equity study. But the contracts have been sent over here, do you?
They've been sent over. They needed to be sent back to the consultant for some changes before they were, could be signed by the borough manager. I'm not, I'm not aware yet if they've been signed, but that happened, that transaction happened weeks ago, so I imagine it's signed and executed at this point.
I'm having a little trouble hearing, you know, I actually don't, I forgot my hearing aids this time, so here's the deal, the contracts are here and they had to be sent out, to be reviewed?
We got the contracts.
Yeah.
They had to be amended, because they didn't have the details we needed. Mike Perone handled that, I think, a couple of weeks ago.
Uh huh.
And I'm not aware if that contract has come back from the consultant and been signed yet, but that was the path we were on, because that was what council had
Okay, but it's in progress.
Correct.
And it has to go to the county, too?
Correct.
Okay. Well, I, I know that's accurate information, because Dana is nodding yes, which is a good sign. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I was on the train as well, and a lot of fun, actually. It's a little hay rattling, but, and I, I think I've commented twice before how overgrown or how dense the foliage is. I, the last time I was on the train was probably 20 years ago, and that foliage, if you stick your head out the window one inch, you're going to get whacked. It's that thick. But it was, it was an absolutely delightful ride, both ways. Please.
Oh, there we go, okay, that's working, sorry. The question I have is, does, does the outcome, our future outcome from SEPTA change depending on the results of the economic development study? You know, the, the, our economic impact study, I'm sorry. That will, will, if we do, if we proceed with the study that we, like we planned to, and we get specific, I don't even know what the results would be, but we get data back, would that then change SEPTA's view going forward? Might not change it this year, but like you said, it's on their 12-year plan, but I don't, do they have a 12-year plan, and they don't plan again for 12 years? Like, I feel like they'll, they'll update that. So, and the reason I ask is, I just, I feel like we're arguing over, and I have, I don't think I've ever said this on council, like, a really small amount of money comparatively to our budget. I, I mean, I can't, we, we approved, how, how many budget. I mean, I can't, we, we approved how many items last night that were triple, double, at least double the amount of this money. So, you know, I don't, I don't like to make light of spending the taxpayer money, but I think in this case, this is money that is being spent with the hopes of serving the community and the taxpayers. So I, I'm in favor of keeping it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. DiPattis, did you want to say something?
I think that the difference between what we approved, Mr. Stefano, tonight versus this, and it is a small amount, but budgeted versus not budgeted, and a very tight budget where we don't have the funds.
Okay. Remember to push that button.
So I apologize for my tardiness, and perhaps you said this, but my question is twofold. Number one, do we have someone that you've already hired to do this economic impact study? And has it commenced? And when will be the termination of that study? That's my first question, who that might be. And then my second question is, can the rail issue be broadened to look at the bigger issue of transportation impact in Westchester? So that rail is one of the things that we do consider as a possibility, that we can look at other issues that might best serve the community as well as rail. It might take a little bit of all of them, but is this, rather than disbanding rail, can we look at it as a bigger picture and a bigger continuum? So that's my question. And perhaps someone mentioned this, but I just wanted to ask it.
Thank you. The, the contract, I think, Sean, that, the contract that you were just discussing, that's the one I'm referring to, correct? So yes, that, that's in process. No money has been spent yet. And when it comes to a more global perspective, actually, after the meeting, we said a few of us briefly mentioned that. And we thought, also another thought that has come up is the Rail Restoration Committee, perhaps modifying their function to do what you said, to examine the different types of transportation in Westchester. But the impression I got from the, the SEPTA management was that that's something, it's of big interest to them, too. I know they want to get the buses up to Exton. But that's something, yeah, someone had mentioned, you know, maybe we could put together a small task force to, to, to deal purposely with those issues. Does that answer your question? No, it has not been done. Name of the company, I think it's Econo something, rather?
Econsalt Solutions Incorporated, they're based in Philadelphia.
Yeah, so no, nothing has been done yet. The SEPTA people, do you mean?
I feel like that would be a different, we, so the committee, you're referring, you're referring to the committee, the Rail Restoration Committee, and that, the scope of that is pretty specific. I think if you wanted to change that, that would be a council decision. So if you wanted to suggest that to council, I don't know if that would go through a committee or just right now on this board, but I don't, I don't think the committee themselves could change that.
No, the, the rail commission could actually be disbanded by, by Bernie Flynn making a motion that we disband the rail commission, and second it by Mike Stefano, and then we take a, a vote across all seven wards. If it's approved, it no longer exists. So that, that is a way to eliminate the Trail Commission, but I don't think that's our full intention. Our intention right now is, we had the meeting with SEPTA, and SEPTA was very, very nice and very kind, not to say the word no, and not to say maybe, or made to say never. What they did was, they said, it's not in our, currently in our plans. And then Mr. Skip Bryan stood up and faced the audience and clearly stated what their position is moving forward. And their position is to incorporate the SEPTA system in Westchester and throughout Chester County by the use of electric buses and loop buses inside the borough to get people to the Exton Station for the high-speed rail. Now, they, I don't, they're politicians just like the rest of us are, and they're never going to put their feet in a bucket and say, that'll never happen, or it won't happen. You know, they'll dance around and say, that's a possibility. And someone asked Mr. Lund, if we did the economic study, would it make, make a difference? And he said, well, it may be obsolete by the time we ever get around to seeing it again, based on our projections of when we think we could start the rail line again in Westchester. The other fact was, he said, because the rail line was disbanded or shut down, it has to start over again as a new rail line. Re-establishment of the existing rail line doesn't work. Then the next question was, well, how do we get funding? Then they explained how the federal government allocates funds for the rail system, and they allocate it for the nation, not just for Chester County or Pennsylvania. So everybody's vying for the same bucket of money to fix the thing. So that, it's a, would I love to see the train here and run into Philly? Absolutely. Moreover, I'd rather see Pesci, Westchester University, and the Borough, and the Commonwealth do a high-speed or a high-quick rail line from Cheney University to Westchester University so they could transport the students back and forth, instead of using buses and fossil fuels to come back and forth from the two campuses. Because it looks like what's going to happen in the future, not tomorrow, not, who knows when. Both campuses may have to use the same footprint, because Westchester is running out of space and Cheney has space. And that rail line goes right to the door of Cheney, and it goes right to the front door of the university. And I think a commuter rail going back and forth, transporting students would be a great use of that rail line.
Someone's talking. Could they talk into a microphone?
Talking that much, am I? So what I was saying, sir, for those of you up there, I was saying that, thank you, Mr. Flynn, for that synopsis, because it was very thorough and detailed, and I heard every single point you said. He also said that SEPTA looks at that 12-year plan every year, and when, so that 12-year plan could adjust and could pivot every year. The second thing I heard Skip get up and say is that we need to be having the bigger conversation about transportation, not just specifically rail from here to Media to Philadelphia. And so that's why I asked the question. When Mr. Schwab, was it, that got up and asked you all the question about disbanding that particular group, nobody answered. So your answer tonight was very concise and precise, and I appreciate that. However, I don't believe I heard an answer yesterday evening to his specific question. But more importantly, what I was asking is if they are willing, the rail committee that is now in place are interested in having the bigger conversation about transportation. And Mr. Stefano, I think you gave your answer. If they're interested, or if they're only interested in doing what they're doing, and then we can then have another committee to talk about the bigger conversation about transportation. Because I think we can't be myopic, we have to be inclusive of everything that you've just said as well.
Well, if I can respond to that briefly, I think that's Ms. DiPattis. I think your points are well taken, but the problem is, nobody has informed anyone on the Rail Committee that we were going to have either of these discussions. So, you know, that's why last night, the suggestion was to send this as a discussion item on Smart Growth's agenda next month. This is sort of a, something that I feel like we should probably involve them in a discussion about their future and the scope of their mandate. But because this has been brought up in, in other business tonight and in public comment last night, no, nobody from the Restoration Commission has any idea that we're even discussing this at this point. So, which I, I think is a little problematic. Not to mention the fact that we're having the exact same discussion tonight that we had last month. I suspect, did, did Sean tell you, I bet him a beer we'd be done by 7:30 tonight? And, and this is why we're doing this again? But to, to the original point, like, we should obviously make sure the commission or the committee is aware that, that we're having this discussion and involve them.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Scott, and then we're going to wrap it up.
I about talked about the 12-year plan. 12-year plan is to be reviewed by SEPTA next year and revised, if that's advisable, according to them. As a matter of fact, they have to do that every year. So 12 years from now would be 2033. We don't have to wait until 2033 to ask SEPTA to change their priorities. So everybody should understand that. It's not written in stone. And with respect to the buses going around Westchester, I'm going to write a letter to the esteemed Chairman of the Smart Growth Committee and my colleagues on that committee to discuss that. It's a separate issue, you know? If that's ongoing, we got to know what it's about and see if we're wanted for advice, or see if we want to give advice. So I'm going to ask the Smart Growth to look at that. And I, I don't see why that isn't appropriate. So I'll be asking for that to get on the agenda next month. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. Bracelet, I'd like to make a motion that we end the meeting.
That's where I was going. I'll second that.
If there's no other business, we can just adjourn. We don't, we don't need a motion.
All right. Without any further business to discuss, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Don.